All right, and we are good to go.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Starting the regular meeting for the Disabilities Commission for the month of December. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Thanks. We got some presenters today. Hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving and I'm just happy to touch base with you and keep the work. I think we had a really positive meeting last week and I look forward to keeping up that momentum this week. I want to start with just a quick roll call attendance. I'll call your name and if you could just confirm that you're here. I'm going to just go through my teams list. So Alex Elliott here, Commissioner Ling Ellis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Antonini.
Present.
Commissioner Sussman.
I'm in here.
Perfect. Commissioner Azariah.
Here.
Commissioner Henler.
Here.
Thank you. So that's our quorum. We're still waiting. We might get joined by a couple more folks, but I want to be mindful of everyone's time. And again, thanks, everyone, for being here. I'm going to get started with the agenda, which we were going to swear in a new commissioner, but she hasn't come yet. So if she shows up, we'll jump back to that item. But I want to be mindful of our presenters. So I'm going to move on to Item 2A, Staff Administrative Items, A Presentation Discussion and Possible Action On Update on City of Santa Monica Website Accessibility From Jeremy Peterson, Who's the User Experience Designer, And Kevin Hobson, Who's the Software Developer. If you noticed in the Meeting Agenda, There was a Presentation Link. So he sent us and also Noah sent an email with a copy of the PowerPoint if you want to read along with this. But he also is going to do a screen share. And this really ties in nicely to our retreat. We talked a lot about the importance of improving the accessibility of our digital spaces. And the website is at the top of that list. So really looking forward to this presentation and I'm going to kick it off to the city staff. And thanks again for coming to our commission and presenting today.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for having us. I will share my screen with you. We put together a brief presentation and I'm going to kind of start with just an overview of the project. And then we'll dive into specifics of what this means from an accessibility standpoint. So just like I said, a brief overview of the project, we started it really at the onset of the pandemic where we were transitioning from the city's current or past website, smgov.net. And as I'm sure you're aware, we had a whole collection of different websites. And so we found that it was really confusing for the community. They didn't know what the single website was. The information was kind of all over the place and it was really difficult to find things because of this disconnected environment. So what we did was we ultimately created a singular website for the city of Santa Monica, which is the santamonica.gov website, where we transitioned over 50,000 pages across all of those different websites and we're now around 2,000 pages. And with that sort of shrinking of pages, we did a full revamp of the information as well. The information, like I said, was kind of all over the place. And so we really looked at the content to figure out how we want to present information, what is still relevant, and you know, the best way to do so. I mean, as part of that process, we moved away from 65 unique URLs to just one, santamonica.gov. In addition to sort of just the ease of finding information, this really allowed us from a technology standpoint to also better manage the type of content that we're presenting and the backend technology that we were using to do so. And as part of this, we established WCAG 2.0 as sort of a minimum requirement for all the pages. And as we go through our presentation, you'll really see that Kevin and I are personally really passionate about this topic. And when I say as a minimum requirement, I just want to emphasize that that's an absolute minimum. When we look at all of the pages and technology that we're using across the websites, we don't only want to just meet the minimum requirements from a legal standpoint, but really making sure that the website is accessible, that the assistive technology tools are working like we would like them to, and that people are really able to navigate the website. And so to help with this, we also recognize that, you know, Kevin and I are not experts in all of the content across the city. We're not architects or we're not public works department. So we established a governance structure to really make sure that we built in guide rails for the rest of the city staff that are creating these pages, that are creating the content. And this allows us to really maintain standards by creating technology that isn't super flexible. It's flexible in the sense that we have all the tools and resources we need to present the information. But we really maintain a strong governance structure. So people can't come in there and add things that don't meet those accessibility standards that we've established for the site. So the main way that we did this is through a templated design. We ended up with around 15 templates so far. And the number continues to grow as we introduced new templates, new functionality. One that will be launching probably by the end of the year will be events. And all of that, like I said, is created in a templated design. And the goal of that is to not only create reusable templates, but really the reusable components within the templates. So this page here has a header image, then we have a title, then we have body copy. And then we have a jump to section that will move you throughout the page and then links to the top resources. And each of those resources that you'll see as buttons are created with a title and then are created with a description as well as all the metadata beneath that to let people know that it is clickable and that it will be clicking either to an internal resource or an external resource. By creating all the components and making sure that all the components within a particular template are ADA compliant individually, we really then are able to collectively make sure that they meet those standards as well. So that being said, we're not just grabbing a bunch of components that we know are compliant and putting them on a single page. Once we do that, we go through the process of making sure that they're all working together as well to make sure that you can tab through the pages, that the alt text is working and those types of things. And by creating this sort of standardization, we're able to really limit things in a way that allows us from a technology perspective to keep control over the system so that people aren't coming in and adding things that don't meet those standards that we want, while also giving us the freedom to not have to learn and, you know, maintain the content across a lot of areas that we maybe don't understand as well. One thing that's really important as well for achieving that is images. So being really conscious of our users that may be visually impaired and making sure that their experience is equally as pleasant. So we use a system, what's called a Digital Asset Manager. And the Digital Asset Manager is where we store all of the images across the city. And these images are used for the website. The system will automatically resize them for each of the components. So making sure that the header image, which is, you know, maybe wider and thinner, has certain dimensions where something like a button that is maybe more compact and square has different dimensions. This system allows us to upload one image and then it will, it will sort of automatically meet those dimensions. And we'll get into what that means shortly. So the images that are uploaded into the system are reviewed against city standards and are either approved or rejected in the Digital Asset Manager itself. So that means is that nobody can come in and add an image to the website that hasn't first been reviewed. Again, really leaning into that governance structure. Every image that's added to the new city website is first reviewed by somebody and either approved or rejected. And what we're really looking for in that approval is, you know, from a somewhat superficial level is just making sure that it is high quality. Then from an equity standpoint, making sure that it really represents the full diversity of the city of Santa Monica community. And then importantly as well is making sure that all of the images are named in a way that when we're using assistive technology, it really helps to create an understanding of what the image is trying to convey. So instead of just naming a photo like this, you know, an outside image of City Hall, something like image 453 taken by photographer Jeremy Peterson. We really want to make sure that the title is descriptive. And in turn, all of the alt text that we're sharing on the website is also descriptive. So the example that is on the screen now is an image with a bunch of copy on it. The image is for a candy cane drive that is hosted by our police department. And they uploaded this image. And again, going through the review process, this image was rejected, right? The image has copy on it that would not be read by a screen reader. It has a lot of information that really should be content that we're putting into a page. And we, in this instance, rejected it because we want to make sure that that information again is, is read by accessibility tools and, and that our images are just used more or less to enhance the experience. And in the instances when it goes beyond just enhancing the experience, we're making sure that all of those proper naming conventions and nomenclatures in place so that people that don't have the benefit of sight can also get the full context of what's happening on the page. And so this is an example of an image that was approved. So in this image, there will, there's a teacher and she's leading a group of children who are painting a mural. And so we made sure that the image title name here is reflective of that. And it says adult helping three kids paint a mural of the Santa Monica Pier. So the naming in itself will help describe what the image is for those that do have, that are cited. So this is an example again of an image that would be approved. And all of the images go through this process before they'll ever be listed on the santamonica.gov website. So I'll turn it over to Kevin. He's going to speak a little bit more about the technology and development that kind of leads to this experience.
Thank you, Jeremy. So the system that we're using to manage all this is a content management system called Orchard. And this replaces the old system that we had called Ektron that we used for, oh, I guess about 10 years. The advantage of Orchard is that the content that we create in it is structured. So instead of just having a page that someone edits or worse yet, creates and say a Word document and then just paste it into the page, we create these structured items that are specific to a need. So for instance, the topic explainer is a type of a content item. And it has got fields in it that are specific to explaining a topic relevant to, you know, operations within the city. Other types we have in there are programs. A recent type that was, that we just added was local business to work with the Buy Santa Monica program. The advantage, of course, of all of these specific content types is that a content author who's creating information for the city simply goes in and fills in a series of fields as opposed to creating the text in a free form way. And those fields can be laid out and additional accessibility metadata can be attached to those fields where appropriate. So that when someone's using assistive technology to read the page, they get appropriate additional information while they're reading through the page. Also allows someone that's using, say, tabbing to move through the screen because due to motor issues, using a mouse is unapplicable to sequentially move through the content in an orderly way so that things make sense when they're read. So that was a big advantage for us when we moved to this new system is the ability to, to control the format of the, of the pages without having to actually create all of the page content in just free form HTML. That's the main advantage there. Let's see. What else did we talk about on this, Jeremy? I'm sorry. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, no, I think that covers it. You know, I just again, wanted to emphasize the fact that when we're looking at each one of these components and holistically, you know, accessibility is definitely something that's important to us. And we're again, not just trying to aim to meet sort of the bare minimum covered in WCAG, but doing a lot of testing as well. It's something that, you know, Kevin and I are also very open to is we are working with some agencies on the front end to help with some of the styling and things that you see there. And we've done a number of tests both on PC and Macs with ourselves, but are really looking to expand those resources as well. So hoping tonight to learn a little bit more about your experience or, you know, any advice or any input that you have as well as sort of direction that would help us to continue to improve this experience.
I have a question. Who is the one who, who in the city staff is responsible for adding content and managing it?
Yeah, so we have about across the city, there's close to 80 users now and those users are from different departments. We really did that because they have the expertise around that and felt that if we built the structure from the technology standpoint that sort of creates the guide rails, then they'll be responsible for filling it in.
And on that note, and just want to thank you for your presentation and definitely want to get other folks' feedback and the opportunity to ask some questions. But what's the process if we have suggestions to add content like to the accessibility page or our Disabilities Commission page? I had filled out a template months ago and kind of went into a Bermuda Triangle. So just if we could be clear about if I do get requests, there's great information about helping people with disabilities. People ask me a lot about the Affordable Connectivity Benefit, a critical thing more people need to be aware about. But I think there's opportunities on our website to market resources for people with disability. And if you could let us know what the best process to do, that would be, that would be super helpful.
Yeah, I would recommend, you know, just connecting with Noah can probably help point you to the resource. But we have again, probably about 80 people across the city. And so there are people that are responsible for different levels of content. One thing, you know, that I didn't touch on, but is sort of the iterative process because we had so many, so much content on the website that the boards and commissions are coming soon, probably in Q1 of 2023. And that just becomes, you know, we have city council meetings dating back to the 80s. And so it's just a huge lift of bringing a lot of that over. But you'll see an improved template. But in the meantime, we should absolutely be sharing, you know, information where possible. So.
And please keep us posted when that timeframe on when the commission's website. Understand this is a heavy lift and you have to prioritize things and whatnot. But as soon as you get like, this is when it's coming, this is how you can contribute. Let us know because we want to contribute.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We would love the partnership on that. So.
I have a lot of questions, but I want to open it up and give everyone a chance. Commissioners on the call, do you have questions for our presenters? Commissioner Antonini?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. That's super interesting. So I imagine, you know, most of the work is kind of around images because that, you know, virtually every page is going to have a lot of images on it. So that's probably the vast majority of the assets you work with. But I'm curious if there are also videos and audio content under your management and if there's a way to, you know, make sure that any video or audio has like transcripts associated with it.
Yeah, for us, it's more or less presenting the information for the videos. But the actual videos themselves are managed by our city TV team. So I again, would just recommend probably Noah could help direct you to the, to Marcus. He leads our city TV team and just making sure that we're able to accommodate that as well.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Will we be able to break it down according to disabilities? In other words, if we have people who are, you know, seniors, you know, with a disability, looking to navigate a way to, you know, get Section 8 and find housing that is, you know, has an accommodation for them. Will there be a way for us to have a place to curate whatever information we have?
In the sense of video content or just like in general with the agendas and those type of things?
Well, not just, not just the agendas, but, you know, the actual source of how to do it and how to find it. So we have a, we have a tremendous amount of information out there that I know Alex, one of his main things has been he wants to curate it. And so we put it in a way so that people will be able to find information that is all over the place. So there's a lot of good information that a lot of people with disabilities do not have simply because they have no way of knowing how to find it or look for it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, I think if there are resources out there that you think would be helpful, our goal is always to make sure that we're serving the entirety of the Santa Monica community. So, you know, very interested in reviewing those resources and seeing where we can help elevate them.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask a question.
Commissioner Henler, go ahead.
Yeah, have you, have you teamed up or thought about the idea of working with Seascape? Or are you, you know, the, the, the exercise and fitness sort of arts and craft stuff? That newspaper, have you like used any of their material and have they used your material? Or like how, and are you going to use it if possible?
Yeah, so we, we sort of use Seascape in sort of a different breath, right? In the sense that it's a printed material. But what we try to do with that publication is work with our Office of Communications to make sure that the publication is always referring back to the website. And then we share additional information there to really give it a digital space to expand, not only, you know, for the size of Seascape, but again, making sure that it's accessible to different people. We have the benefit of some machine translation services as well on the website. They can help people with different languages and things like that. So always trying to make sure that we're capturing stuff in the digital space as well.
Yeah. And then there's Ameritas. But those two are good resources, I think.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And any information, our Office Communications Team does a great job between the blogs and the news of trying to share timely updates that are in Seascape in the digital space as well. And then just like I said, continuing to expand. I think one thing that happened on the old website that we really are looking to get ahead of here was we ended up with those 50,000 pages because there wasn't sort of ongoing management. So making sure that if you find a page on our website, it's not because it was created 15 years ago and you searched the right terms, right? Making sure that we're removing pages that aren't relevant and keeping the ones that are up there really up to date and fresh.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of things on your presentation I liked. I think it's tough. You guys have a head lift and you have good, it seems like a good content management system, a good level of governance. But can you speak a little bit to like, you know, there's always going to be an automatic process and then you need a human beings with disabilities process. So I'd like if you could speak a little bit to like, do you have users with visual impairments using screen readers? Or is it your team or is that something you're trying? Can you just speak to that? Because I think that's usually where the gap is. The automatic tools and the wave accessibility scanner or site improve. I don't know what you guys are doing. That's good, but to get that best experience, you need folks with at least several different types of abilities to actually play around in there and give you feedback. And I'm curious how you guys are doing that.
Yeah, Kevin, do you want to take that or?
Well, actually, that's, that's something that we have been really looking to get other assistance with. So we do test with a couple different screen readers right now. On the Windows platform, we use Narrator. On the Mac platform, we use VoiceOver. There's a third one that I've got installed on my machine that's an open source tool, which, well, we do do this testing, but this is from the point of view of, you know, I'm, I'm cited, so I might go in and have this, the system read the page to me. But that's not really a real usability test. So, so I've been asking our organization for a while to see, can we get more assistance from the actual communities that are using these assistive technologies? And get some real back and forth iterative development going, you know, whether they use it, they come back and say, this needs to change and we make those changes. But I'm looking for that resource, but I don't know where to find it.
No, and I just want to thank you for doing your due diligence and doing what you can with that constraint. But that, that's kind of a concern I have is that these types of issues are not properly resourced. Not that you're going above and beyond and testing it with three different screen readers from a non-disabled person's perspective is better than nothing. But ultimately where we got to get is maybe we, there's, I know like DCRC has like a whole assistive technology program. Maybe it's Santa Monica College students, maybe it's UCLA's disability computing program. But at the end of the day, to get us where we ultimately want to be, we got to have people with disabilities testing this. And I don't think this is a criticism review. I think this is a symptom of not resourcing digital accessibility, which is something our, our commission has brought to the city and we're going to continue to bring to the city because it needs to be properly resourced. But again, thank you for doing your diligence with minimal resources.
No, absolutely. And, you know, just emphasizing what Kevin said too. I mean, I think that we've done what we can, but we're absolutely looking for your guidance or assistance as well. We definitely want to get to that point where we are testing this out into a live environment where we're really validating the work that we're doing. Because it's easy for us to, you know, sit here, present and know that we're doing everything that we can. But until we get those users to your point, I think that we're hoping to find gaps and find the opportunities where we can really make some changes as well. So.
And one big thing, and then I'll open it up again, is just I noticed you put your baseline and I appreciate you framing it as your baseline is WCAG. But 2.2 is about to come out. So I was hoping it would be 2.1 and then you're saying you're going to do 2.2 as soon as it finalized in probably the first quarter. But that, that's got to be our, our target when the, when the official release of 2.2 is. That, that's got to be a target. And I say that also because there's also the Department of Justice at the federal level. They're indicating that they're going to update Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act and give more concrete technical assistance on how local governments have to make their websites. I think that's part of the challenge is there, there really isn't an ADA for websites. It, you, when you look at lawsuits, it tends to be like you weren't compliant with these WCAG 2.0, but there's not like an official technical assistance center or documentation, but that's going to come. So if, if we get our website to 2.2 AA, we're going to be that much, you know, we don't have to be reactive. And if we start getting partnerships where people with disabilities are testing it, that's just going to make it, you know, being proactive is a lot cheaper than being reactive. So that, that's part of why I want to mention the WCAG 2.2. That's going to be, that, that's a must have.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think that as new standards continue to come out, that we sort of see this as just like a, a rolling goal is continuing to set those as the bare, the bare minimum. And then doing this testing with people that can really help guide us beyond just those standards that are established, I think, is really where we'd like to be. So.
It would be interesting if we could, you know, when you're at a point where you need something tested, if we could put together, you know, through our resources, a focus group for you and, you know, give them a link for a period of time where they can go in and test it and then give you, provide feedback with you. You know, I can talk about being deaf and, you know, and hearing loss and what I need. But, you know, that's completely different from somebody who is, you know, low vision or blind. So I wonder if we could talk about that in the future. When you're ready.
I think we're at a point, you know, this project is really iterative. So, you know, we're definitely open to looking at what we have, testing it, improving. And because we're building it really using these components, I think the sooner we can get ahead of it before we keep reusing components that might not be accessible, the better. So.
Yeah, I mean, like if you have user acceptance testing scripts you want to send as a, I don't know. I'm thinking of a process that, that would facilitate this. You know, other places use like DevOps or like these tools. I could see those being a challenge because we might need credentials and blah, blah, blah. But if, if there's a process we can think about, maybe to, to get that feedback, that would be helpful.
I'd like to ask a question related to that because one of the issues when you talk about, say, user acceptance scripts and so forth is that in that scenario, we would come to you, we would say, well, can you test these things this way? But ideally, what I'm looking for is people who are actually just using the site in a real world operation and just giving us feedback on it. So I'd rather have that be happening right now rather than saying, oh, in three weeks, we're going to release this and then we want people to just test this segment. Uh, that's, that's not really what I'm looking for.
That's helpful. I'm thinking how we can be helpful in, in connecting and getting those users. I mean, DCRC comes to mind, um, but we, that's something maybe we can uh think about and, and bring some suggestions how to make that happen.
We don't really have to, it doesn't have to be somebody within Santa Monica who has a disability. You know, I have, you know, uh, I have worked on, you know, many national boards that have people, you know, like the World Institute on Disabilities, where people have, you know, a variety of disabilities. And many of them are um, there were a lot of blind members of the uh, of the uh organization who also headed up like AT&amp;T, you know, accessibility. So perhaps maybe we can tap into some of those people. Will you be having videos? I, I don't remember what you said.
We will continue to have videos in some instances in the sense like city council meetings or this meeting's being recorded, so if it's used, um, things like that. But um beyond that, they're more of like supportive content and those kind of things.
Okay. And they will be captioned and they will be, uh, well, they don't really need to be audited described unless they're pictures, right?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. If Noah doesn't mind taking a note on that, we can go back to City TV. They're really responsible for all the video content for the city um and make sure that they're, you know, aware of those standards that we're going to set and that they're following them. So I believe they already are, but just don't want to speak on their behalf.
Right, right.
And again, WCAG 2.2 for everybody. That, that's, if, if that's one thing from whatever, it's, that's the bare minimum moving forward, the latest iteration. But I want to check with other members of the commission. Do you guys have questions for our presenters?
Um, I do. Thank you so much for the presentation. I was wondering if there's anything new added. How do we find out um or the general public find out?
Yeah, it's a good question. So we've been um internally, we train staff. We have a series of training videos and we've broken them down for each template to really make sure that people understand not only that it's new, but how we want them to be using it and how to use the, the resource. Things like events, you know, we, we haven't traditionally been doing announcements on things like that. They more roll out and replace old outdated technology. Our current system is, uh, I think Kevin was saying this morning, from 2003 or something like that and far from accessible, um, you know, and, and really difficult to use on our end. So that's more of you'll go to the system where you maybe were doing events before and now you'll see a new clean experience. Certain things that we're rolling out though, that are sort of uh big updates, we're trying to do bigger pushes, you know, in the future, we're going to be doing a replacement of the Big Blue Bus website, the library website, um, when we roll out our new boards and commissions pages. Some of those things, we'll do some blog posts or press releases about just to make sure that people are aware, so. And the other thing that we're doing too is when we shut down those resources is we're redirecting them so that you won't be able to find the old pages. We really don't want people to come and find old outdated boards and commission pages and then not know that there's a meeting maybe happening tonight, so.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, I think it goes without saying that we, you know, we're available, you know, to, to help in any way, you know, to contact us and if we can help you, we will.
No, I really appreciate that. And um, you know, I, I hope this becomes an open dialogue. We're definitely open for input as well and really looking to make this site as accessible as possible. So we really appreciate all your input and feedback and.
I have, I have an idea, actually. Um, what about um something like a, a peer, peer uh situation where you have like, you know, I don't know if that's too much of a, like, pinpointing who's going to be in the group, you know what I mean? Or in the, in the um, whatever the project is in the, in, in um that situation, like what? Could, like some sort of a peer group for, for disabled people or something? And then um, um, I don't know. I just have this idea that it's nice to bring people together and I don't know. It sounds like something that people could like sign up for. And I don't know, maybe it could be like in Palisades Park or at the, at the Annenberg or.
Hey, Commissioner Handler, sorry, this is a, this is a little off topic. We're talking about um ADA compliance and not groups.
Okay, sorry. I'm still learning.
No need to be sorry, thank you.
Um, I am, and I'm just throwing this out there and I don't know if it helps you in any way. But I was on an NIH uh council and so I, I was put into this, it's called research math. And they would say to me, you know, I would fill out information about my profile, you know, my age and, you know, what my disability experience is. And then periodically I will get something that says, you might be a good match for this study. So I can either say yes or no. I'm wondering if at some point, or if this is too labor intensive, if something like that could be put out there, like, hey, we're looking for these kinds of users to, you know, come in and test our, you know, our, our tools or whatever, you know, and see if anybody's interested that way. But that would have to be something where they would come in and put their profile on. You wouldn't have to go out looking for them. I don't think that's possible now, but.
Yeah, no, it's a great suggestion. I mean, we really want in our testing as much diversity as possible. I think that that's the best way to really represent the whole, the whole Santa Monica community. So that's what we're looking for. And I think um Kevin's earlier point, there's things that we really have been focusing on, like making sure when we get there that the boards and commissions, you know, it's really important for civic engagement. So we want to make sure that those um we're giving extra time to. But there's a lot of things, we want people engaging in community events and we want people, you know, experiencing Santa Monica as holistically as possible. So sort of that natural flow of people coming across things that maybe we didn't think about would be helpful as well, so.
Um, just a, a couple of suggestions too. Just whatever the plan forward, I hope um accessibility overlays aren't part of that roadmap. That's just kind of a, a thing I've heard from the community is those aren't, there's just a lot of issues around accessibility overlays. And then just moving forward, um, I've seen other environments with accessibility pages. They have the ability to report if you're having an accessibility issue, so like a form, because I hit this barrier or whatever, this was this. So I've seen other pages like in their accessibility section subsection of the website. It additionally will have like a form that's like, I, I had an accessibility issue and whatever the, um, an ex, whatever your, your reporting processes may be in that, including a dropdown for accessibility or a standalone for accessibility, but that's key. And then at the end of the day, again, I, I think there may need to be some resourcing for this at some point because this is just the tip of the iceberg. Web experience are going to get more complex, require more auditing, require more people with disabilities. Where, while we want to do what we can for 2022, we also have to think about 2027 and XR, whatever the next thing is. And um, I, I don't want them to burn you out or stretch you any more thinner. You, you need, you, you know, you need resources and some, some uh, um, the Ally project and Ally is a big term, A11Y. So that might be so, a topic to search on Twitter, whatever. That's like a hashtag, it's short for accessibility, but A11Y. And there's a, a, a collection of resources from the Ally project that just have just great curated materials about making accessible web uh experiences and potential vendors to do some of this, um, you know, testing um and, and other things. Because again, we, at, it needs to be resourced more. We, you can only do so much. So, so at some point, the, the city, I think, is going to have to look into that. And part of that can be working with us and, you know, maybe we can get some of our partners to do something pro bono. But this, this is important enough moving forward that it's probably going to need some more resources. And maybe even, I don't know if it'll be like other environments have like a web accessibility officer that kind of over all this and coordinates it, kind of like an IT project manager, but focused on accessibility and, and throughout the culture. We've made that recommendation. But at the end of the day, it, there needs to be some more resources attached. So as much as we can do for free is great, but long-term, I think we, we need some more resources around this. And um, I mean, the website's one piece, but we also have concerns outside of your scope, but like, you know, virtual meetings and things like that and, and mobile applications, the, the whole gamut of uh digital spaces um to, to, to get it to where we want to be as a, a city of Santa Monica that prides ourselves on being equitable. We, we got to resource it a little more. But um I do want to acknowledge just you, you guys are, are doing your diligence with, with the, the limited resources you have.
No, I appreciate it. And I, I think that's a great suggestion too about adding the form. That's something that we could spin up fairly easily too. So I added that to my notes to make sure we get that up there.
A quick question, what, what is the term accessibility overlay refer to?
Um, it, it's like a third-party plugin um that markets itself that it makes your website from accessible. But I just, it, yeah, I've heard it, it leads to not the best experiences. And I think too, it's kind of the theory that you can just add a couple of lines of code and make something accessible is, is a little cynical. I'm open to a magical technology that's a couple of lines of code that makes everything accessible. I just don't think it exists yet.
No, I, I'm in that same camp with you. I think we did look at a few of those plugins and when we actually tested them, they were accessible. So when we visited the site and used the plugin and then actually read it with a screen reader, it was completely indecipherable. So we, we, we ruled those out early on.
That, that, that's good to hear. I just want to check in with other commission members, see if, if we got any more questions for, for our presenters. Going once.
What's, I, I've got a question. What is the end product? Is it print or a mixture of things?
Yeah, for this case, it's just going to always be web. You know, people develop content in sort of different ways. But for our scope, it's always going to be the website and how we're presenting information in sort of that digital space.
Okay, and what's the website?
The SantaMonica.gov.
SantaMonica.gov, okay.
Yeah, so you'll still see, there's probably a few other websites like Annenberg, the library, Big Blue Bus that are still floating out there. But as part of this project, we're absorbing all of those into the singular environment.
I appreciate all the work you've been doing because I think you're, this is something Alex and I've been discussing for months though. You know, how to, how to start the engine here, but you obviously already started it. You're moving.
And yeah, this is something that's been on the commission's mind for a while. And again, we want to come here with carrots, uh, to, but um there's going to be sticks around accessibility. So we want to bring the carrots, so you don't have to deal with the sticks. Um, I'll just put it that way. We're, we're not trying to be, you know, we're trying to be a good team here.
No, I appreciate it. And, and we're not scared of sticks either. If there's issues, please feel free to elevate them to us. We're, you know, by all means, we do our best. But if there's things that are, you know, that you find or that you uncover, please let us know so that we can make sure that we're addressing them, so. We appreciate the, the opportunity to present and we appreciate all of your feedback and input too. And, you know, like I said, hopefully that sort of an ongoing partnership where we continue to learn more from you and we'll continue to do our best to invest in this product to make sure it's as accessible as possible.
Thank you. I want to give one last chance for questions and then if no questions, we'll let you guys go. Once. All right, thanks, thanks for coming. We really appreciate your time and, and look forward to, to continuing to work together to, to make this site as accessible as possible. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, I'm going to keep the agenda moving. Excuse me, um, we're under staff administration, staff administrative items to be. 2023's uh homeless count. Let me, let me pull up my other page. Um, just wanted to mention, I, I want to give actually shout out to, we had commission members participate last year, Commissioner Zaria. But if I'm missing anybody, thank you for participating. And you may have gotten a, a email about this, that um you can register for the 2023 count. There's also links on the website. So I just wanted to make that announcement and um I think they're asking that there have to be teams that form. So I, I also wanted to, if we can get enough folks, I, I, I'm going to sign up. But if, if we wanted to think about maybe having a Disabilities Commission team, and again, it's the night of January 25th. So I think if we were interested in a team, we'd sign up together. Um, and I think we'd need at least, and chime in, Noah, if you have insights, but maybe four to have a team, three?
It's a Wednesday?
It's January.
January 5.
January 25th, 2020.
January 25th.
So that's a Wednesday.
Yes, and I believe it starts at 10:30 and it, it'll go, you know, late depending on your route, but probably, you know, two in the morning or so, depending.
I can be in the team and I can volunteer because I do volunteer with our community.
I uh pulled up the webpage. So it starts at 11 and can go all the way to 3 and they are looking for teams of three to four individuals.
Great.
Yeah, I was going to say, um.
Are they meeting at St. Monica?
Commissioner Handler?
Yeah, are they meeting on, at um St. Monica's this year?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Commissioner Azariah?
Yeah, I, I was just saying that I can be in the team, um, help with the count. It's just if someone can drive.
Yeah, getting a, a, a non-driving one.
If possible.
Yeah, very.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, um, and it's still, um, so the next person, a person sitting next needs to look at the um, the map and um, you know, go through the streets and then the third person can do the documentation.
Yeah, on the mobile app.
With the mobile app, yeah.
For, for those who have done it before, could you maybe give a description of like exactly how, how that works?
Sure, I've, I think I've done it like six or seven times now. But you go to St. Monica, you uh park your car. They have like an orientation that they, they give you a heads up on everything you really need to, how to identify an encampment, how to do the count, how to stay. The key is to, you got to stay in, in your lane, like you, you, in your section, you don't want to be counting other people's sections. You know, I'm sure after the, the orientation, you'll get a good sense of what you have to do. You document when you see an encampment or a person on a, an app. You mark it uh with pencil on a map also, so you get kind of a map of where everyone is. Something, some areas are walkable, so you'll get like a couple of blocks where you walk around with your team. Some are, last year, a lot of them were in the car, so. Some are, last year, a lot of them were in the car. So, um, actually my, my assignment, I had a police escort. So we had the police escort in the front. Um, I was doing the documentation on the app in the backseat and then my, another teammate was writing on the map and doing the, the worksheet. So that, that's usually the division of labor is two people kind of on the documentation. And one walking and then sometimes you switch. Um, and it probably takes a couple of hours to get. Through your route and then you go back, turn your paperwork, they verify it. Um, they provide coffee and snacks while you do the orientation. Sometimes they switch up the teams my, if they have a need, but I think if we came together as a team, we, we'd stay together the whole time.
Thanks. Yeah, no, that sounds, I, I'd be interested in, in helping out with that.
Uh, last year there was, um, because of the COVID. Um, we were just supposed to, I mean, it wasn't like a cumulative orientation. It was just in small groups and there were no snacks.
Yeah, maybe it'll be on the online this year. It's, we're still.
I mean, the numbers are bad because of the flu and stuff. So I'm not sure how January will look like, but it's pretty, it's really hard right now. The numbers are up.
Yeah, that, that's something to consider too, is things are upticking on, on RSV and COVID. So we're making predictions now.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. How, how long is it like generally?
Um, I think they, they estimate it'll go from eleven to around three.
Oh, okay, three.
A couple of times I've gotten out of there, been home at one, and then I, there's been times where I've stayed till three. It, it also determines like if you get a driving assignment, walking. How quick you go through your area.
Right.
Uh, last year we were home in a couple of hours. Um, it's the app that you have to enter everything rather than the document. This was the new, something new last year and, um. I guess, uh, I don't know, you just have to go slow because sometimes people like drive really fast, you may not see them. Um, they're in the corners or by the stairs or under. Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, I think we went like twice, um, through the same streets. Yeah. But yeah, it's, that is, I mean, something that would help in the future.
And I imagine it must be, do, do you mark people? I mean, it must be hard to find people who are living in their car versus sleeping on their, on the street, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, and in the orientation, they, they give you some. Decision-making tools on, on how to determine if it's an encampment and what to look for and. But. Some of it is a guesstimate that you do, you do, you make your most informed decision, but it's not going to be scientific. Uh, but some of it's obvious, but some is, there is some judgment involved.
Alex, did you, um, happen to read the Santa Monica Daily Press? The quotes coming from Lhasa?
I, I have.
Claiming that based on last year's. LA County homeless count, fourteen percent. Had mental problems. I find that a very low number. I think it's much higher than that personally. And they claim that one out of four of the homeless are drug addicts. Which I think is also, um, I think there's a ton of people that are dual diagnosis. But that's just my opinion. It was an interesting article.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look and that, those numbers. Don't seem accurate because, yeah, it maybe, yeah, I, I'd have to take a look at that article. I, I'd be curious if they're saying that. Uh, having a mental challenge was the primary issue that led to their homelessness. I, I know when I was working as a social worker. Becoming homeless is a traumatic event in and of itself. So. When you become homeless, you may develop a mental challenge that you didn't have before. So. Just the other, I, I'd have to look at the article, but that fourteen percent number doesn't, doesn't seem accurate. Um, but to, to circle back, so it sounds like a couple of folks, I think we can put together a team of three to four. I, I'm in. Just want to double check if I should just go ahead and fill out that survey monkey for our crew or are we ready to, to, or do folks want to? Uh, email me if they're interested or are people confident enough to say I'm, I want to do it right now during this meeting?
Well, this is personal, but I may not be able to stay. Until like three in the morning. I don't know. Um. I, um, so, but let me get the person who's, who's heading it. And then I will, um. That'll give me some time to see if I can stay. Is it Alex? Are you doing the monkey thing?
Yeah, I was.
Monkey.
I was thinking I, I'd sign up for a team, uh, from the disabilities commission. And if I can get at least three of us, I can fill it out and let them know we may have a fourth. Was my, my thoughts on the approach and. And I think four is the max. So if we wanted to have a second team, we'd need at least six folks, which might be tough, but I think we could pull off one team of three to four.
Well, how would that, how would that be feasible? Like if I signed up now and then. And like, oh gosh, I keep saying like, eh, eh, as if, I, I think, um. That I, you know, how would that work if we have like a full. Um, group of people and then I. Bailed at the last minute, that would not be cool. So what, um. Do you have more than three or four?
I think four is the max for one team.
Okay.
So, so if we had three, we could say we're going to have a team. We just don't know if it's going to be three or four and. You could volunteer to be the fourth. If you can make it awesome, we'd love to have you. If you can, it, it's fine. We can still pull off a team. That's my thought.
Okay. Okay.
Great.
Sounds good. I'm in.
And, um, this is now, uh, just so that we comply with, uh, the Brown Act. Uh, if and when you guys meet up for this, uh, please do not discuss any, uh. You know, commission business, um, because that would be breaking the rules. So, yeah.
We, we're allowed to have a team and those. That's not controversial, I don't think.
It's correct. Um, as long as it's not a quorum, though you guys should be fine as a team, but, um. You're not supposed to discuss any commission business that could lead to forming opinions or discussing things in advance. Or, uh, you know, already kind of steering the conversation a certain way because you all discussed it already. Right. That's the only thing.
Sounds good. We'll, we'll be mindful to, to stay focused on the count.
Um, I'm in.
Great. So I'm in Commissioner Azariah. I'll put Commissioner Handler as a maybe.
I think we need one more, a maybe.
I can't commit a hundred percent right this moment. So I'll, I'll discuss with my wife, but, uh, I'll, I'll contact you afterwards. So.
Once. When, when you get a sense of, of if you can go or not, just shoot me an email.
And I do not do well in the dark at night. So I. Unfortunately, I'll have to opt out.
No worries. So I think we got two yeses and two maybe. So maybe I'll, I'll wait, I'll, uh, no way. Do you know when the, the deadline is?
It can't be till January.
Uh, sorry, give me one second. I'm on the page right now. Let me, let me look at this. And then, um, I'll let you know. I'm reading the, the survey monkey.
All right. So sometime between now and the deadline, if you could let me, if you're yea or nay, um, if we get to a third person, I'll, I'll sign us up. If not, I'm planning to participate either way, but, um, I, it would be great to have a team.
Can you do an email to the whole group, knowing?
Yeah.
On Alex's behalf about asking the other members who are not here tonight? If they would be interested in signing up?
Um, yeah, I can send a group email and have them contact Alex.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Um, I think we're, I'm, I'm gonna keep the agenda moving and, and thanks for interest. I think this, um, it, it's a good event and it'll be awesome if we get a team. Um, so to see, um, the human services grant program proposal review panel. The deadline to submit interest to participating, it's actually, it changed. It's this Friday at six PM, December ninth, even though it says on the agenda, December seventh, the deadline's December ninth. Let me pull up my email to describe this a little bit better. So the, I'm just going to read what they sent me and, and you probably got this in your email as well, but it's, it's, it's an opportunity to, to give direct feedback on. Uh, organizations that are applying to the RFP for, um, the human services grants. Um, so we, they, they need folks, uh, with disabilities, uh, expertise around disability issues. Um, they, they really need our insights and it's our. Opportunity to chime in on providing services at the city. That's the, the high level, but, um, you, you probably got an email about it. I mean, they've reached out to me a couple more times. But, um, let me just read, um, the city of Santa Monica's housing and human services division is seeking qualified. Individuals to review proposals received in response to the twenty-three to twenty-seven. Uh, human services grant program RFP. The review panel will include subject matter experts and service provision for a variety of vulnerable populations in Santa Monica. Including seniors, youth, family, people with disability and people experience homelessness. Additional reviewers may include individuals serving on boards, commissions, community groups, neighborhood associations, people with lived experience as consumers and services. As well as representatives from related fields, including public policy, social services, financial. Assurance services, philanthropy, nonprofit and diversity, equity and inclusion. The RFP is scheduled to close January eighteenth and reviewers will rescore, will score these proposals during the month of February. Perspective reviewers must be prepared to commit ten to fifteen hours for the scoring process. Um, and to participate in individual proposal review and virtual review panel group discussions. Uh, interested individuals are invited to complete the statement of interest form. And in order to be considered, you have to submit the statement of interest form to the human services at santa monica.gov email by. Friday, December ninth at six, right? Yeah.
I, I submitted an application.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner Link Ellis. Um, I just wanted to make that announcement to this group if, um. If you're interested in, in reviewing these proposals, giving your insights from, from your lived experience, from your perspective as a subject matter expert. On the disabilities commission, the, the city would love to have your feedback, um, to inform the selection of. Uh, who's going to get the winning proposals? Any questions, thoughts about this?
Could you elaborate? If you've ever done any review panels, it's really interesting because the way they put them together, everybody comes in with a unique perspective. So it's not like you have to be an expert. In housing or you, you know, it's, it's, uh, really gives you an idea as to the process of how. People get funded and how they measure the funding. So. And ten hours is usually on a weekend. It's not during, you know, the workday.
Yeah.
It's in my experience.
That was one of the questions I did ask because, um, it's, it's tough for me to do it during business hours and they, they said, um. I shouldn't, if, if I was interested, that should be available, um, outside of business hours in the month of February. So I'm, I'm leaning towards doing it. I just have to double check that it works, but I'm, I'm leaning towards doing it as well. And it, it's voluntary optional. I just thought it, uh, both the city could use, uh, the commissioners on this call's perspectives. Um, and it, it's probably a cool opportunity to learn how things are, are funded and measured and selected. And, and have a, a, um, uh, an impact in the city potential, potentially. Any thoughts or, or questions or anything before I move, keep the agenda moving?
Yeah. What is it exactly? Again, could you explain?
It's the, the human services grant, um, program proposal review panel. They're, they're asking for people to be a part of that review panel.
Oh, I, the people that were presenting today?
No, no, it's a separate topic. Um, there, there's a, a, if you're interested, a form is due at the end of this week. Um, if you're interested in being a part of this review panel.
And what do they, what is this review panel? What is there? What do they do?
They, they review, um, the organizations that responded to the, um, RFP, the request for proposals. And they'll read them, evaluate them and score them and it'll take about ten to fifteen hours to, to do your duties and scoring. And that scoring will help inform who gets funding from the city of Santa Monica.
I see. Thank you for explaining.
Again, all this information is, is in your email. Just, we gotta, we've got a multiple request to try and get folks to peep from. With perspectives from people with disabilities. So if, if you're interested, fill that out by the end of this week. And thanks, Commissioner Link Ellis for already doing that. That's, that's awesome. All right. I'm, I'm going to keep the agenda moving. Two D reports from ad hoc committees and liaisons and discussion and possible action on. Re-establishing and or establishing additional ones. Um, and then two D I is. The ad hoc committee on digital equity with, um, the Chair Elliott and Vice Chair Link Ellis. And that, I can, I can give an update on this one and, and please chime in Commissioner Link Ellis if I miss anything, but we submitted the, the letter. Last month to the city manager, the entire city council. We didn't hear anything back, but the plan was always to submit it twice. Um, and the, the new, um, city council. Uh, members get sworn in tomorrow, so we can resubmit this letter after tomorrow, the end of this week or, um, next week. And I'm hoping we get a response to this now. And if we don't, I'm going to follow up. Um. But the, the only thing is there were some broken hyperlinks on the first one we sent, so I'm going to fix those. So. It, it's going to be the same content, but when you clicked on the link, it didn't go anywhere. Um, so in this draft, I'm going to make sure those work. Um, before I send it to Noah again, and then the only difference will be it'll list the current city council members and mayor, whoever gets. They're deciding who the, the mayor and, and pro tem mayor are tomorrow. So we'll just update. That first sentence to reference the, the current person. Um, and then I'll, I'll send that to Noah and we'll get it out again. Um, and, and then that'll mark. And then, and then that'll mark, then I guess at the next one, we'll, we'll close this ad hoc when, when we complete that final task of, of the committee. Sound good to everybody? All right, I'm gonna keep it moving to an update from ad hoc committee examining the state of the accessibility of recreation programs. Commissioner Nicholas, who is absent, Commissioner Azariah and Commissioner Sussman. Sussman, do you have any updates on this one?
No, I don't have that. I can look on it.
No worries. We can, we can come back to it at the next one.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sussman, did you want to chime in here at all? No worries. All right, I'm gonna, and then the, the next one is, are we considering adding any new ad hocs? I know a lot of folks have just joined and wanted to marinate on this a little bit before deciding, but does anyone have any ideas? No, totally voluntary, but just wanted to check in. I, I actually have an idea for one, but I wanna check in and see if, if anyone is interested in starting a new ad hoc or wanted to just talk about potential ideas.
So I mentioned this last time. I've still been thinking about it, but getting kind of a survey of the like sidewalks and kind of like mobility accessibility throughout the city is something I'm pretty interested in. And I, 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 I don't wanna propose it this particular session, because realistically, I'm not gonna have time to actually work on it this month. But I'm hoping in the, the next, at our next meeting, we can maybe put together an ad hoc committee on, on that. Because I would like to look into whether or not there is any existing data on just kind of like the widths of sidewalks and any obstacles along, you know, those kinds of passageways through our city. And if not, you know, maybe actually going out and collecting it ourselves to kind of identify any locations where, you know, the things could be improved.
I know some organizations like do walks through areas to do that kind of testing. I don't know. I don't know if they do it in Santa Monica, but I've heard about this and I, I may have even been emailed about it through the commission.
Yeah, it'd be great if, you know, that data already existed, so.
I think there's a complaint process that people will complain about, you know, sidewalk being broken. And I don't know, we discussed this and tried to do and have done some of this in the past, but this is something that we, we need to keep on top of, because there's one street on, I wanna say Nebraska, it's close to Olympic. And it's a kind of a, like an industrial creative business area. It's not really residential. But there's a sidewalk that is not, I don't know, it's, it's not even, you know, accessible, but in the middle of it is a telephone pole. So two people can't even walk side by side. So that kind of, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, it might be good to get, if we could get some data on how many complaints are actually submitted and, you know, kind of what the response has been from that. That would be useful as well.
That might be a good, to have somebody from, Noah, can you tell me which group this is, to come in and discuss, you know, how, you know, complaints come in and how they're dealt with. It's not traffic, it's.
I'm not sure either.
Is it that 311 app?
You can submit 311 cases and even if you submit it to the wrong department or division, they get rerouted to the correct person. The 311 cases are handled by real life people. So for instance, I'm in charge of the general mailbox for human services. So I've had parking things come into my cases and obviously they're not for us. So I forward them to the right person.
Great. Now, that, that's a good topic. Thanks for bringing it up and even just bringing some ideas on some data sources we gotta look at.
Right.
Yeah, it's good to know that there's interest in that. I'll, I'll keep thinking about it and hopefully I think next meeting we can kind of make it official.
Especially with all the building going on here. I mean, we had a situation in our alley. They were building, a building next door. And they, they minimized the requirements to make it just short enough, so it did not need public comments. So that automatically told us that, you know, there was gonna be trouble. And one of the things happened when they were starting to dig the garage was they created the sinkhole. And the sinkhole was next to a telephone pole. And it was just a nightmare, because people would say, oh, no, that's this department, oh, that's this department. You know, we, so we started calling every department until one man finally came out to see what it was, that he could contact all the people, because it meant moving the, you know, the utility pole, it meant moving the telephone, it meant getting steel plates put in so that people didn't disappear into the, the sinkhole that the, the building just, you know, they didn't do anything about it. So yeah.
This is a, this is an important topic. We gotta, just for the reasons you mentioned, we have to know what data exists there, so we don't recreate efforts and we can use that data to tackle a gap.
And build on, yeah.
Yeah, to leverage what exists. Um, well, I'll, I'll chime in. Oh, go ahead, Matthew.
Yeah, I was wondering, since I'm the recipient, even with the disabled placard of quite a few streets sweeping, not getting a chance, because there's just not enough spaces for cars to park. I live on 9th in Santa Monica. Um. What does the city, I know they have handicap, blue curved spaces downtown. I would imagine it's the minimum required by the ADA Act or some subsidy to that or further volume of that law book. I just wonder why they stopped with being downtown, because I've got a school over here. It's by Tuesday morning, it's a children's daycare in a home. But it's a full-blown business with a security guard and it's a $200 parking ticket towaway zone during school hours. And the signage isn't that fantastic. I had to pay a guy $200 to drop my car. Anyway. I just, I, I wish they had more blue spaces around, because parking, as most of us know, if you don't have underground parking, wow, you're in trouble. The whole ordeal, if you have a car.
This, this reminded me of a topic, Commissioner.
Too many cars and not enough spaces.
You know, Commissioner Block was really concerned about some mobility issues. And in the past, we've had folks from parking present to us and give us all the rules and handouts and a lot of information relating to what you were talking about. So maybe that's what we could, is getting someone that can speak to that. And perhaps if, if Commissioner Block is at the next one, maybe it might be something to work on in, as in a future ad hoc. Um, but to, the, the ad hoc, I, I wanted to start, it, it's tied to the letter we sent, tied kind of under that digital equity umbrella is, I, I wanna start an ad hoc hybrid commission meeting ad hoc with the deliverable, a hybrid commission meeting with a Microsoft Teams component and an in-person component. And, and that, that was one of our recommendations. It was like we wanted, other city councils are doing it already at the county level. I, I'm, I could go on and on. I'm a little frustrated. We haven't gotten there here, but I think we can pilot that. We can pull it off. And another kind of reason I see some urgency is, I believe March 1 is when the state of emergency is gonna end. So that's kind of a triggering of a new normal. And you know, COVID's upticking again. Folks with disabilities are probably have to be more risk averse around indoor, but they have to be, participate in our commissions. And so I, I've said this, I don't, some of you may agree, I think we have to have a hybrid option moving forward. That's just where the world is now with COVID and everything going on. So I think we, we need to have that flexibility to have a Microsoft Teams component. And then if you're willing and able to meet in person, we can have that option too. So I wanna start that ad hoc committee, hybrid, the hybrid meeting, Microsoft Teams and in-person component. I think some commissions, there's a, a recording I watched that we're able, I think, to meet in person if we'd like eventually. I'm not sure where that building is. That's something I'll follow up in the new year. And I'm thinking, yeah, COVID's not good right now, but eventually that's where, that'll be the deliverable. So I'm hoping like March or April, when, when the end of the emergency declaration is. And I've already thought about like the logistics, is I can bring in a laptop. I'll have Microsoft Teams on my computer. You guys can choose to come meet me wherever the, the meeting is physically happening. If not, you can Microsoft Teams in. I'm fine if I'm the only person there and the other eight or nine of you folks are at there, but we have to proof of concept this. It's, I think we, we can't wait.
Um, we have always met at the Ken Edwards Center in those two rooms, because those rooms are looped. They're poorly looped, but they're looped. So they were created with accessibility in mind. It's not the greatest location in the world, but.
Yeah, that's what I was guessing. It'll be in person. I just don't know and all. Maybe Noah, we, we can touch base about that, where, where we'd physically meet.
Yeah, definitely. Yes, you know, the Ken Edwards Center is not a, a place where our boards and commissions can meet anymore, but there are options such as city council chambers or the rooms at the park.
City council chambers and, and what park is that?
So is the city council, they're meeting live, but we're not allowed to?
Yes.
Is that my understanding? Is that correct?
You mean.
Is meeting live, right?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
But we can't, because they.
You can, you can vote to. So boards and commissions have the option of voting to meet in person as of, I believe it was last month. So if that's something you would like to do, you can definitely put it on the agenda. But it is not a hybrid model. It is either you're all in unanimously or we continue to have online meetings.
That, thanks for that, that clarification. I wasn't clear on that process. So Matthew, we'll, we'll put that on a future, our, our next agenda to talk about that and, and possibly take action if we're unanimous about that. We'll put that on the agenda. Cause I, I know you were talking about it, but I didn't.
I, I'm not an expert with Microsoft Teams or Zoom or any of that. And I just think it's, you know, I've had my sick shot, so I don't know about you guys. I just think with, with things would gel, the ad hocs would flow and grow, you know, if we're together, meeting together instead of over cell phones and laptops and desktops.
Well, you know, city hall, city council is hybrid, because they do take public comment over the phone. And you can Zoom, you can go into Zoom and watch city council, which I've done. And you can be present. So they're doing hybrid.
Um, my understanding is that it, it's just me as your staff liaison. City council has the city clerk's office and they have extra hands to help. I have done a meeting of the Recreation and Parks and city chambers and city hall.
Okay.
And you do need another person to handle the various devices there. And are you sure they're taking public comment over the phone? I wasn't aware of the, I could be mistaken.
And you need a reasonable accommodation.
Yeah.
They were at least as of a few months ago or something, when I think I provided some public comment over the phone. One, one thing I will add is that I think it is important that if we are, if we do manage to go the hybrid route, that we have the proper equipment for it. Cause I, in the past, I've, you know, even before COVID, I was remoted, brief, very briefly, the only remote employee at my company. And, you know, they basically would just like set up a laptop and that does not work very well as a, as a solution. Like you, you do need like proper teleconferencing equipment, because otherwise it very much feels like the meeting is happening, you know, among the people in the room and, you know, you are an outsider and aren't really in the meeting. So getting the equipment with, with that in mind, I think makes a, a huge difference in whether or not it succeeds or not. So that might require some spending from the, the city. I'm not sure what they currently have, but yeah, that'll be something we'll have to, to make sure about.
No, that's a good point. Noah, can you email me just the list of potential in-person sites?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, just, I'm thinking about that ad hoc, maybe, I don't know. I do wanna establish it, but I think I, there's some more thinking into it. Maybe I was, I know I could pull it off, but that is a good point. If we had more than one person in the physical space, like if it was like three and three, if it was me, the only one there and everyone else on teams, it would work. But if we have more than one person at the physical space, that would require a certain level of IT equipment and I could see how it would not be the best experience. But it's possible and we gotta get there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, the tricky thing is when you sort of have that critical mass in person and then making sure that everyone who is not in person still feels like they're, they're a part of it. But yeah, the equipment definitely exists to make that possible.
Yeah. My motivation is I, I think we can move the needle here and just proof of concept, like we, you can do this and they're really dragging their feet. I'm, I'm a little frustrated to be, to be honest. Other cities are doing it. I think Culver City is hybrid. I am on a number of committees that are in person plus some, the arguments that I've heard before seem moot to me. And then March 1, when the emergency declaration is done, they seem, all arguments on not doing it seem really moot to me. So I do feel like I wanna, yeah, this is just a, like, we need to be able to fully participate. For some folks, that means in person. For some, if there's another surge in whatever, June or something, they need to be able to, if you're a member of the public or a commissioner, have to be able to have a team's option. So I thought this ad hoc could move the needle towards, we gotta think about it and we may not get it perfect, but I think we could prove the concept and then get them to stop dragging their feet.
I agree with you.
Is anyone interested in, in joining me on this? Um, is anyone interested in in joining me on this?
I said.
Yeah, I'll join too.
I join.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to create the ad hoc committee. On hybrid um, commission meetings with Microsoft Teams and in person, and I'm going to add. Um, Commissioner Antonini and Commissioner Sussman. Does that? Did I capture that? And if I did, can I get a second?
A second.
Right now, um. Let me do a just roll call just to be official. Um, Commissioner Link Ellis.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Antonini.
Yes.
Commissioner Sussman.
Yes.
Commissioner Azariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Hedler.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So we established that um, I'll, we'll talk about it next meeting and flush it out. Um. Yeah, then I'm looking forward to this. I think this. This is actually what we'll get things moving because this isn't just about us. This is every commission needs to be doing this, and I think we could pioneer it. And even if we don't get it perfect, I think we'll we'll build some on this. So thanks for and thanks for the the teamwork on this. Um, just want to check in before I I move on. Any uh, anyone want to chime in around new ad hocks or or should we keep the agenda moving?
I say keep the agenda moving.
Okay, um. Um. To E discussion. Oh, man, I think I messed up on this one. Um. Discussion of possible action on establishing liaisons for Santa Monica Board and Commissions. I actually was supposed to get an update on our current liaisons here too. Um, I think uh, there's Commissioner Antonini is is with. Maybe housing and then we had um, Commissioner uh. Block is not here, but she's the liaison for the Human Services, but just want to check in. Do you have any updates?
I.
Go, go, sorry. Commissioner Link Ellis, go for it.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so there there was uh, one meeting of the Housing Commission, um, which unfortunately I I missed, but did have. Some. One component of it, which was relevant. So um. Some of you may be aware that Santa Monica and as well as every, you know, city in California is is going through the um. This cycle called RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and uh, every city needs to basically make sure that it is accounted for. Um, future growth and has planned enough housing for their expectations. Um, so one. Component of this that the Housing Commission has been considering um, is the needs of um, the. The community of um, those with disabilities. And so they have a document which um, I can, not sure if I can um, share it here directly. Maybe I can just. I'm not sure if I'm, I I also allowed to email it, but uh, maybe I can just add it to the chat. Um, but basically they have a a breakdown of um. The estimated population of people in Santa Monica with disabilities um, broken down by. Age groups and kind of uh, broad categories that sort of indicate what sort of housing needs they might have. So I I wish I had been able to attend this particular meeting because it um, you know, it it was uh, quite relevant, but it does look like they. Have at least been, you know, considering the needs of uh. Of this population. Um, trying to find it where I had, I've seemed to have lost this link. Um, but I I will add it to the chat so that everyone can take a quick look.
You you're you were gonna hyperlink us to the Housing Commission's um, agenda or meeting minutes?
Well, yeah, within the minutes, they had a link to a PDF that had um. A report about this particular group.
I think.
Oh, but it looks like chat has been disabled, so I can't do that.
Yeah.
Um, but if you go to the meeting minutes for, I think it's November, their November meeting. Uh, and you look at Agenda Item five A, Part E. Appendix B. That's where you can find it.
Okay, I'll I'll take a look at that.
So there there's a nine-page document.
Lady government.
Awesome. I'll check that out. Uh, that that's super relevant. And in the past, they they wanted to collaborate. Uh, with us more. So if there's an option to to get involved, let us know.
Yeah, I I'll I'll. I'll I'll keep uh, better tabs on on this next time because this came up not too long after I had a. It started, so.
No worries. And and thanks for just uh, doing some research on this and bringing it back. Um, I don't see any of our other liaisons to other commissions. So I guess um, is anyone interested in being a liaison for a commission?
Well, I would like to bring up something from City Council.
Oh, go for it.
Um. They had a. An agenda item about digital kiosk. And I had been invited to see. A kiosk demo and to give my feedback from a disability standpoint. The next meeting. It was tabled until. You know, the next meeting. And I had sent in a letter saying that um, just like our previous letter that. Before before they were going to issue a contract to somebody. That they needed our input. Again, nothing about us without us. And so I submitted the, you know, the letter to the, you know, the clerk. Then it was tabled and then um. I discovered that city staff recommended. Another company get this twenty-year contract. On something that no one had really seen. They put something together at the last minute for City Council. Uh, I wasn't invited. I don't know anybody else who had a chance to see it. During this uh, this not very well-run meeting, the audio went out. So there was no way for any uh, there was no captions because the captioner needs the audio feed in order to do it. So the the meeting was really done without the public being able to be part of the. Discussion. Um, and they said that because the item had been tabled, they would take no further public comment on it, even though it didn't have it the first time. So the uh, item was voted on and passed, uh, but there's no. There's no audio recording of the meeting. So there's no record of this. Being discussed and voted on. So uh, I understand that there's going to be some kind of uh. Issues raised about the fact that, you know, they voted on a contract where nobody. It was not part of any official records. There's. Uh, I know Phil Brock was looking to see if anybody who was in the chambers, any, you know, members of the public had actually recorded. If anybody had any audio of proceedings of the meeting. To my knowledge, they never found it. So I think they're going to have to go back to square one and redo the whole thing. You know, I was not happy about the fact that I had submitted comments. And I had also submitted more comments the day, you know, that they were going to. Recommend it. My whole thing was we'd like to see who are the contenders out there. You know, and what accessibility. Factors have they put into it rather than give somebody a contract for twenty years? And then then go back and ask for opinion. It's 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 going back and doing everything the same way we've been trying to get them not to do. So I don't know if the if the contract is going to be undone because it's a violation of the Brown Act. I've heard, you know, a lot of bruhah about it, so I don't know. And that will be probably discussed tomorrow night at the meeting afterwards, new people are sworn in. But it was just, Noah, do you know any more about this?
Uh, no, I do not. Um, I'm not really. Uh, in the discussions of anything uh, that City Council does, that is the city clerk.
Okay.
Appreciate you you sharing that with us and I'll monitor it too if it comes back up and see if there's an opportunity to. They have to redo it. We should comment.
And I don't understand why something that's been tabled, meaning it wasn't discussed at a prior meeting. That they're not allowing any further public inputs. When no one had been given a chance to provide it to begin with. So even the written public comments were not accepted from what I understand.
It definitely sounds like there's some process problems with. This whole ordeal.
Yeah. And they just couldn't, they just never solved the technical difficulties.
Well, I I think we'll we'll find out tomorrow if there's um, more to this item. Um, and we'll go from there. I think I'll I'll keep the agenda moving to um, item two F, November election results. Um. You you guys got an email um, to your city, but just the um. I know we talked about just um. Um, Measure CS passed, um. Measure, I just want to list what what passed because it's official. Measure GS passed. Um, which created a new funding stream for homelessness prevention, affordable housing, schools, and created a residential oversight committee. Um, Measure um, HMP passed, which established uh, rules around a business tax on licensed cannabis businesses. I don't think they have it right now, but it establishes the framework for when they. If if and when they they do establish cannabis businesses.
Get that tax money.
Yeah, it it there, I think it's the cart ahead of the horse. Um, but I'm I'm glad they're thinking about it. Um. Uh, uh, Measure PB passed. Which changed the, expanded the eligibility for folks who want to serve on the Personnel Board. Um, they can work. Um, in Santa Monica and live in another community in LA County. Or if they own property in the city or have a business license, they can be a part of the Personnel Board. Um, a big one that we talked about, um. Here is the uh. A me- Measures EM and RC that they're related to rent control. Um, they require owner occupancy for two years before a tenant can be evicted. And they reduced um, the general adjustment on rent from six percent. Um, so rents, it's going to decrease to zero point eight percent starting in February. So if your rent got increased, it's it's going to be a little bit less um, from February first to um. August thirty-first. Um. And then it's on average not uh, rent um, general adjustments are not going to exceed three percent. It's going to be a maximum after. So that that was a a big one we talked about in that past. Um, and then just um, uh, Lena Negrete, uh, Carolyn Terosis and Jesse Zwick are our new council members. They're being sworn in tomorrow. I just bring this up because we've talked many times, uh, we want to engage these folks and now now's the time. There's no more waiting, so. Um, I may even shoot them. I'm hoping folks respond to our Digital Equity Letter, and that can be kind of a bridge to invite some folks, but. I'm going to start reaching out, inviting them to our meetings. We we need to uh, converse with these folks. Um, and then the the members of the Rent Control Board, um, Erica Leslie, Daniel Ivanoff and Kurt Gonca. Um, there were, there were three slots, um, and three people applied, so they all got it. And then um, uh. Councilwoman Terosis is um, uh, stepping down from the Rent Board. Um, when she becomes council member tomorrow, so that there'll be an opening in the next month or so. They'll post it. So again, this is in your email. I just wanted to high, high level go over this, um, especially that there's. New council members and and now's the time to start engaging those new folks and building that relationship. Um, and I think it thought it was a good um, segue into our um, next item, which I'm going to move on to a two G just future agenda planning. And I just wanted to to get some key dates just on on folks' radar. Um, so our next uh, meeting. Uh, our next regular meeting in is in January is falling on a holiday. Um, so we, the the question is, um. I'm thinking we should schedule a regular meeting for February, but um. If you guys wanted to do a special meeting in January or wait until February for our regular meeting. Um, that's something I wanted to check in with folks. Um. I can do probably later in the month, the first. Um, the ninth and the sixteenth. I'm not available the ninth. I may not be available on the sixteenth, but the twenty-third. Are, I don't know, but we I may be able to do a special meeting in the the later half of January, or we could just wait until. The first Monday in February to have a regular meeting, but um.
I think I think that's best because if we're going to do something on the twenty-third and the thirtieth, then the following week is February, so.
Okay, so I'll put put on your calendar for. Um. February. Sixth is going to be our next regular meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I mentioned a couple of times, just March one is the end of the emergency declaration by Gavin Newsom, so that. May trigger some things. Um, well, uh, I hope to have an update at our next meeting and then. Um, I I'm going to check.
Can you repeat the next meeting, please?
It's going to be Monday, February sixth.
February sixth?
Yes, Monday, February sixth.
Monday, February sixth, okay.
At the same time, six thirty. And then we have the. The homeless count that ended January, so we we have, we're we're active and I think also some folks will start to engage in in. The the proposal. And then just wanted to, if folks are interested in potentially being a Chair or Vice Chair. Um, we're, I'm finding out my timeline, but it'll probably be at the end of June is when my term will end as Chair. So just wanted to throw it out there. If you. Want to get an opportunity to to lead, um, if that's something you're interested in, just think about it for the next couple of months. Um. And then just wanted to just get your ideas uh, around um, future agenda planning. Um. I'm going to send out that Digital Equity Letter. If I get any responses from City Council, I'm going to follow up with them. And I'm going to start inviting folks directly to our meetings. I'll 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 even throw an invite for February. Um, but I also math, um, I know we also talked about um, thinking about May is Mental Health Month, so maybe that's something we want to. Get on a future agenda, but just wanted to throw out ideas. I know Matthew, you mentioned email. You had an idea around maybe an art gallery or something.
Yeah. I have a friend, uh, I I I know more than one person in Santa Monica that's disabled. That's an artist. And he has all kinds of eclectic Andy Warhol type. He's done some pretty, pretty cool stuff. And he has thirty to forty pieces. And uh. I told him I'd bring it up, you know. If May is Mental Health Month, maybe we could put it on an exhibition. Of disabled Santa Monica and artists. Because it's hard for them, it's much harder for them to get excersa. And people without disabilities.
We have done an art, an art festival in the past. Using artists with disabilities. Steve Ellis. Um. It takes a lot of, we we had to use the public library staff. It's very labor intensive. This and we are no longer allowed to do that. Um. So I think doing it with. So I think doing it with one person with a disability, I think that's problematic. Because then we're not including everybody. Does he have a gallery? Does he have a gallery?
I wasn't suggesting that we only exhibit his work. I thought, you know, you would have people enter into a contest based on some judges' opinions, I guess, something like that. So it'd be open to everyone.
It's a tremendous amount of work. And you need somebody who can take the artwork and keep an inventory and keep track of it. We just don't have the bandwidth.
I guess you're right.
Unfortunately. Cause the library really did the brunt of it for us. It was, we had a great, we had a great turnout. But in all of the city, you know, the city staff cuts, we were told that, you know, we could not do anything like that again. So. Yeah. You're on the right track though, that's for sure.
You know, the, maybe we could broadcast it virtually or something. I don't know. Let, let's, let's talk about it. But I do like the idea of uplifting, uh, people with disabilities artwork and getting the word out. I'm just struggling off the top of my head on the best approach to do that, but it's a good idea, Matthew. I just, I'm trying to figure out the path to make it happen.
Amazing, one dimensional, 2D and 3D art. It's pretty incredible.
Is, does he have digital copies of it? Like maybe if we could.
He's learning how to use a computer. But I, I could take pictures of it.
If there's a way to digitize it so we could post it on the library's website or something, that might be a more feasible path with our limited resources.
Right. Oh, well, it's live and learn.
But definitely going to reach out. I, if, if any city council members take our bait and are willing to come here, I'd, whenever they're available, I want to get them on the agenda. So whatever works for them, we'll make space. At some point too, I want to, uh, you know, in the next few months, deliver on trying out a hybrid meeting, but I, we still need some information. I'm going to find out where we can hold meetings in person. And, uh, think about the technology requirements and well, how we can make it happen, but I'll, I'll come back with that in my next update. And yeah, and then I'll also have on the agenda at our next meeting, talking about meeting in person when I get some information. Cause ultimately, uh, that's going to be part of the deal is, is meeting in person. Um, just, you know, there's still some uncertainty around COVID and, um, we're in a state of emergency. So, um, but the, that'll end in March and hopefully the surge that's happening or this increase will, will be in a better place in, in a couple of months or next time we meet.
Now, I, I noticed the trend is definitely away from masks. I see people wearing them. I'm wearing one. And in 95, as a matter of fact, but, uh, they're going to reinstate that mandatory mask update if COVID cases keep rising.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what happens. I know there's some sort of framework on hospitalization rates or something that would trigger change, but we'll see. Any other ideas for meetings? At some point, we probably want to get something around transportation, parking or something.
Is that public works?
I think, I think that's, I think I even have the documentation somewhere off the check.
Okay.
But. And like today, I still think there's some topics around digital equity. We need some experts. Kudos again to the folks earlier today, but they're just one piece. Their website. And we still need to, I think, speak about Microsoft Teams itself, um, make, making sure we're getting the latest accessibility features. Like they just came out with a, um, uh, sign interpreter view. But you have to like be on the list for getting the public preview to get it. So just making sure they got that, making sure we're using all the accessibility settings. All text on things outside of the website or social media channels. There, there's a lot to talk about. So I think we need a presentation from the CIO and from someone in, in our public information officer, like, like the marketing public information officer and then the chief information officer. So we need at least a presentation or two around digital equity. But those are, I know it's getting late. It's been a long day.
I just want to mention one thing. A former disability commissioner, Dee Capelli, who served, uh, I think it was from 2017 until we were cut off in 2020, just passed away November 27th of pancreatic cancer. And she was, um, blind, legally blind with a guide dog, Dory, who used to come to the meeting. So I thought it would be nice if I could, on behalf of the committee, commission, send a condolence note to her, to her daughter, you say the commission, you know, remembers her. She was a, you know, she was, she was a really, she was a really good commissioner. She was, you know, really on the ball and, you know, gave us a great perspective and, you know, it was a shame when we stopped meeting. But, um, she was pretty young. She went pretty fast. She didn't, she was diagnosed in October. She died in November. So she's in Santa Cruz with her daughter. So anyway, I just thought I'd like to put that in the record.
No, thanks for, for sharing and yeah, we should, um, I like that idea. I'm wondering, Noe, is there anything we can request from the city, like, uh, something on letterhead, something to show our respect and, and appreciation. I served on her for about a year and she was on top of it and provided that perspective that we didn't have and gave some good insights to the city. So is there anything we can get the city support on, on sending our condolences?
Uh, let me follow up on that. I can't speak. I, I don't know if there's a process or not. But I can definitely follow up and get to you, uh, get back to you ASAP.
No worries. Appreciate that. We, we just want to pay our respects in, in any way we can. And, and thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Linkellis. Just wanted to, um, one last call. If, um, there's any ideas around, um, future agenda items. And if you don't have them off the top of your head now, it's fine. Bring them to the next meeting or feel free to shoot me an email. I'm, I'm receptive. If you don't have it, ideas right now, you can always shoot me an email.
Are we using you as your email for the, the contact for the homeless count? Or are we? Who, who's the?
Email me, um, alex.elliott@santamonica.gov.
Wait, sorry. Alex dot Elliott. Dot Elliott, two L's?
Two L's, two Ts.
Two L's, two Ts. IOT?
IOTT.
Sorry.
It's tricky of.
Okay, A L, A L E X dot E L L IOTT.
At santamonica.gov.
Okay.
You can email me about the homeless count. And then if, if you have any ideas about future agenda items or, or you want to check in, whatever, feel free to reach out.
Okay. Is it, um, A L E S dot E L L I O T T?
Yes.
At santamonica.gov.
Perfect.
I don't know when, when, when did they say you had to like? Oh, he put me in as a maybe. Okay.
And I just want to, um, I'm sorry.
They're going to, they're going to firm that up like for, obviously they want you to have like a definite team. But I think he put me down as a four.
Correct. We're, I'm waiting for one more confirmation. We have two yeses and two maybes. And then we're going to, uh, send an email out to the commissioners that couldn't make it today. So as soon as I get one more yes, I'm going to turn it in.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Before I move on in the agenda to public input, just one more check in for future agenda items. All right. I'm going to move on to our final, um, uh, public input, uh, public from input is permitted only on items, not in the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. Uh, state law prohibits the body from taking any actions on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item. So let me, do we have any members of the public? Leila. I'm not, has Limi?
Yes.
Yes, uh, um, welcome. I think, um, it's two minutes, right, Noe?
Yes, I'll start.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi.
Go ahead.
Thank, thank you for, um, recognizing me and for your volunteer service to the community. I'm very appreciative, uh, and believe in the need, uh, of what you do. And I'm here tonight because I, um, have not been successful at reaching, um, anybody in the city to help me with something that, um, I wonder if, even if the commission is unable to help me, that maybe I could just put in a, a request to advocate for, um, an ADA coordinator at the city level. The person that I spoke with, Mirna Medina, um, wasn't able to offer any guidance or assistance. And of course ADA, I realize is a federal, um, law. But I'm hopeful that maybe by speaking out here, that this commission might also recognize the value and importance of our city being not only, um, well-versed in ADA law, but be able to help out when questions arise about applicability of ADA, um, requirements and exceptions. In, within, within our city, when, because the city does have, um, the, the, I feel the city does have the duty to be aware of ADA law and to be able to help with enforcing it. Including the exceptions that are written into ADA law. So that, that's what I came to say. And then anything more specific, if you have questions or would like to contact me. I ha, I, um, did have and appreciate the time that Chair Elliott, um, spoke with me on the phone a few months ago. Unfortunately, it's just taken a very long time and I have not gotten anywhere with my particular issue. Thank you.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming here and sharing your insights and being patient. Really appreciate you coming here and sharing that. And yeah, I appreciate your advocacy. Um, that's something we've talked about. I think just our ADA resources are under-resourced and I appreciate you coming out and, and advocating for more. I want to check in. Are there any other members of the public? I think that's the, I think that's the only, that's the only one. Okay, I'm going to move to adjourn the meeting. Um, can I get a second?
A second.
I'm going to do a roll call. Um, Commissioner Elliott, yes. Commissioner Linkellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Antonini?
Yes.
Commissioner Azaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Henler?
Oh, yeah.
I think Commissioner Sussman is no longer with us. But that, that passes. So we're, we're going to adjourn. I just want to thank everybody for being here. I, I hope you had a good Thanksgiving and you have a good, New Year's and, and Christmas and be safe out there with all that's going on. And, um, you know, just appreciate your time and appreciate collaborating on, um, just doing what we can. Um, and thanks again for being here and, and thanks to the public for your comments and your advocacy. And, um, we'll keep doing what we do. Thanks, everybody. Have a good one. Noe, I can't stop the recording.
Oh, let me stop. I can, one second.